To call our June work session to order. And if I can ask Ms. Anaya to read the open text statement, please.
On Wednesday, February 24th, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed. Sorry, one second. Notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and social media on Friday, June 18th, 2021.
Thank you, May. We have roll call.
Ms. Alabarda?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd is absent. Mr. Dalabarga?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan, here. Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Okay. Can we all please stand and salute the flag? Awesome. Welcome. Are these mics going in and out?
Test.
Test, test. We okay? Good. All right, we're good. So again, welcome to our June work meeting. And it's just astounding how it is. Test, test. Good to go. Awesome. Okay, so I'm gonna start over. Welcome you all to our June work session meeting. And I was just beginning to say what a difference a school year makes, what an enormous difference there is from when we started this school year to how things are right now all around. You can obviously see it in the day-to-day operations of the district and can see it right here with the board. And we had some very, very nice end-of-year activities for our students, of course, culminating in graduation this past week, which was just fantastic. And now we're very busy at work preparing not only for next school year, but for our summer programming. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Gruccio for our superintendent's review of some other items.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our in-person work session with no masks. We're happy to be here, happy to see you. I've just touched briefly on end of the school year, because I'll cover that next week in our business meeting. But we had a successful school closing. We had some nice, cool days filled with lots of culminating activities and excitement. Our graduation ceremony was outstanding, as I always refer to it as the most distinguished commencement exercise in the state of New Jersey. So very, very proud of our students. Congratulations to the class of 2021 and to their parents. The COVID-19 update, as Mr. Castellano said, we are continuing to follow the NJ DOE's guidelines for COVID-19, and that involves mask-wearing, social distancing, and hand sanitizing for educational gatherings within the schools. So our teachers and students and staff were masked and following those guidelines. But outside gatherings and other gatherings such as this have different requirements. So tonight, we're also getting your presentation on the Safe Return to School Plan, which speaks to some of these idols and guidance, the guidelines from the Department of Education. So we'll move right into that, all right? Please present. Just while Mr. Santilli is bringing up the presentation, we are still contact tracing. We are still reporting COVID cases, not as many as we've had. We had a few today. And it's very important that that is occurring. The summit is on top of that, working with our nurses, because our athletic teams are in, beginning their practices for the fall. We have summer camps on campus, and then our summer programming will begin after the Fourth of July. So it's very important that we know what is going on in terms of anyone who has COVID-19. All right, so we're back to where we go. Here's our safe return to in-person instruction. As part of the American Rescue Plan, which will be referred to as ARP, our district is eligible to receive $9.5 million to help sustain the safe operations of schools and to address the impact that COVID-19 pandemic had on our students. In order to receive this funding, in order to receive this funding, I must submit a safe return plan to the New Jersey Department of Education with specific criteria. That specific criteria was outlined in a, for us. We are guided to follow that framework. And so the information that will be presented to you by central office this evening represents the required categories that must be addressed, explained, presented, and approved. Okay, we'll take you through. All right, so the Department of Education provided us with this information the end of May, if you will, with the due date of June 24th. So a lot of work had to be done to read their criteria, look at their framework. We need, we have a need for public comment. We and every school district in New Jersey has the need for public comment and board approval. So what we've done is we use our pandemic, school pandemic teams. Those teams met the week of June 7th. They were very large teams. They involved teachers, parents, administrators, and staff. And they went through the safety plan, and they received comments. And we'll share them with you this evening. The board will be reviewing this presentation and will be voting on, for the submission to the Department of Ed. This plan has to be reviewed at least every 60 days, because things change, okay? Guidance changes, and that depends on what the COVID-19 virus is doing in each and every community. So submission date will be June 24th, and that's why it's important that we have a vote tonight. So this is the timeline, what we threw from our notification to how long the grant lasts. This grant lasts until September 2023. We had our, as I said, we had our pandemic team meetings. Tonight is the final presentation to the public and to the board. We will post the plan on the website tomorrow and submit our safe reopening plan. The EWA grant submission date is 11/24/2021. All right, so I said this is a team approach. You may ask, out of that $9.5 million, how is that money allocated? What is it spent on? And so we're sharing that, and we'll have our BA, who oversees our funding and our money spent, explain that to you.
Sure, this is just a one slide, because there's more to follow as the actual grant application will be due in November for funding. But a quick recap, the 20% is, they're saying, is to specifically go towards evidence-based interventions and look at disproportionate impact to unrepresented student groups. The other 80% can have one of 12 options. Highlighted in there is hiring new staff, retaining staff to avoid layoffs during this time, and facility upgrades, as well as additional protocols to maintain school safety. So more to follow on that.
All right, moving on to the categories. Maintaining health and safety, Mr. Santilli?
So the next few slides will focus on health and safety. And ultimately, if you think about everything we're gonna talk about within really the next few slides in terms of the plan, ultimately, think of it as if we're starting school tomorrow, tomorrow being September 1st. As Dr. Gruccio mentioned, much of this could change. However, that is the approach that we've been directed to follow in regards to our safe return. So you can see here that they talk about the universal correct wearing of masks. Dr. Gruccio opened the meeting stating that during the educational process taking place in our schools even right now during the summer, based off of CDC guidance and also current executive orders that have still been in effect, mask-wearing is still also part of that process and will still be in effect, and our plan reflects that. Physical distancing, that had changed quite a bit during the course of the pandemic. Currently, right now, if you can think of a three-foot physical distance, that is what we are adhering to again right now, even in our summer programs. So that is the best practice, and we'll continue to maintain that. In addition, they do talk about creative use of spaces. So for lunch, for instance, at the high school, how we can spread our students out with still being able to make sure that we feed them at the secondary level moving forward. The other things, moving into health and safety for hand washing. Ultimately, one of the things we would want to continue to do is still to promote this. We do have hand sanitizing stations in all of our schools and all of our hallways and outside of every classroom. That will continue to be maintained, and of course, we would enforce that as a best practice moving forward. Of course, signage and things like that as well, continued use. Cleaning, maintaining health facilities. We work very closely with our facilities director to make sure that we have protocols in place to make sure we have those high-touch areas that are always being hit up during the course of the day. You know, we had really a team that was their main focus. And again, as part of our plan, we would continue to make sure that we adhere to that. You see here, mention about HVAC systems and making sure that they are maintained and are working adequately as we move into, and through the summer months and into the fall. In addition, contact tracing, not something that is really ending at this point. Even though school has ended, our summer programs are still continuing, summer camps and the like. We really wanted to have a partnership with our families, so we rely on a health affirmation and having that partnership with our community, making sure that, you know, if you're sending your child into school, for instance, or into a summer program, that you're making sure you go over all those health protocols and, of course, not send your child in if anything exists in terms of symptoms. That will also be something that will continue to be in effect as per our normal protocols and CDC guidance at this time. And then diagnostic and screening testing, that is also part of what I just mentioned in terms of the health affirmation. Our staff are still, you know, required to make sure that they sign in, but also go through that health affirmation every single day. And we also ask that the partnership continues with our families. And finally here, efforts to provide vaccinations. We've been doing an outstanding job with that. Prior to, actually, once vaccinations became available in this area, we did have outside partnerships. We pride ourselves on our community partnerships. And that will continue, not just with our local pharmacies like CBS or Walgreens or the like, but also especially with Atlantic Care, and we, you know, hope to continue to do that. Things have changed also, not just providing that opportunity to our community and also our staff, but originally it was for 16 years older and higher. Then that changed to 12 years old and higher, and we were allowing students to receive that vaccination on certain specific days within our schools, and we want to continue to have those partnerships. And of course, appropriate accommodations for childrens with disabilities. We do recognize, and part of our initial plan for the road back, made sure that we took those things into effect. Ultimately, when you think about our at-risk students, making sure that we can accommodate their needs, maybe extended mask breaks or having different accommodations in the classroom to be able to support them, but also keeping in mind that we want to keep them and our staff safe. Then we'll move forward.
All right, so talking about the continuity of services. Here, we're going to continue, as we mentioned, we have a lot of summer programs going on to address learning acceleration, as well as adding a supplemental program to our traditional ESY. We also are gonna use assessment data, including the state mandated Start Strong Assessment that will be given in the fall, that will help us identify student needs and then allow us to implement multi-tiered systems of support to support our students both academically and behaviorally, and of course, with their social-emotional needs being at the forefront of that. So being able to expand on our classroom interventions through the nine new positions of interventionists, continuing our RTI pull-out programs, and making partnerships with outside organizations that offer mental health counseling and support for students, and continuous social-emotional supports with extended school day opportunities as well as mentoring programs.
Okay, part of the criteria is for us to describe how LEA saw public comment on this plan and how those public comments into the accounting development of its plan. So what we did was, we, as I explained, we took comment through the convening of our pandemic response team meetings, and that was the week of June 7th. And, you know, the teams got together, they got the insight, which I'm gonna share, and the feedback. And the second part of the criteria, letter B, is to describe how our agency ensured that the plan is an understandable and uniform format. It had to be, has to be in written language so that parents can understand and also be translated in other languages. So the pandemic team meetings were facilitated by LEA principals. We're going to post on our website, and we're also gonna publish in Spanish, and others can have access to Google Translate, so they can be, so they can have access to the plan. And our last slide, sharing with you the comment suggestions and feedback on their health and safety, public comment. Share with us, please, maintain sanitizing stations. Be creative with the use of facilities throughout social distancing for lunch. Have safe use of water refilling stations when allowable, and have safe use of the locker rooms. As we all know, the locker rooms have been closed for use. Regarding the continuity of learning, there's requests for supports for classroom teachers and continual push-ins and pull-out services for students. Extended daycare, day programs, extended day programs, wanna be clear on that. Connections with the community. Have support for students who are all virtual to return to school. Have counseling services for students, and have social-emotional learning and spaces within the school day to be readily accessible. Okay, so there are the comments that we received, the plan that was shared. And that pretty much ends the presentation. If any of you wanna have any questions or comments to share, share with us regarding this. Do that now.
Anyone? Okay. We'll have comments later on as well, so people may have things later.
Okay, well, that concludes our presentation. I thank you for your time and attention. We'll move on to a presentation. Item 4.2, which is preschool providers for the 2021-2022 school year. And if you haven't met them already, our supervisor of the school education, Mr. John Tolan, is going to share some information with you and introduce our guests to seat.
Hello, thank you, Dr. Gruccio, thank you, board. I wanna introduce myself again. I'm John Tolan. I'm the new supervisor for early childhood. For the last six weeks, I've had the opportunity to work within the program and really work with our team here and the parents to get our program up and going and continue on a strong base that we've already created. So just a recap, for this last year, we had 300 students, which started on February 1st. That's 20 classrooms. We had 14 district classrooms with 210 students housed either here or at Egg Harbor Township High School. And then we had six classrooms at Garden State Academy for 90 students. For the 2021-2022 school year, we're expanding to 450 students, which will be 30 classrooms total and additional 10. We're planning to add two at Slayball Primary, two at Gateway Head Start, and six to a private provider. Within those 450 students that we're anticipating for next year, we have 166 that are returning from this current year. We already accepted 150 from our first round of registration, which started roughly mid-May. And now we are on our second round of registration, which ends on Friday. With registration ending on Friday, we have approximately 15 remaining spots open still. We are doing in-person registration tomorrow at Davenport at seven, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and then again from 3:00 to 5:00, to really help and assist with our families that are having trouble registering at home on their own. With the addition of those six private provider classrooms, we just, we created a operational plan guidance for the providers to fill out for us, answering questions, and we scored them on a rubric. They had to determine and had to submit their operational plans on the 7th of June, and we scored them in the areas of experience and expertise, facilities, staff credentials, and safety and security. Upon reviewing their operational plans, we provided them with additional follow-up questions and asked for some clarification on some of their responses. In addition to what they submitted, I also visited all of their sites on 6/11. With that said, and after reviewing and creating these partnerships and these conversations with the providers within the community, we determined that some providers are ready now. Some will not be ready until the fall or next year. With that said, we would like to have Garden State Academy come up and present with you guys, our, who had the highest score right now within the rubric, and we have Ms. Tracy House and Linda Pecchia. Thank you all.
Well, hi, good evening, everybody. I feel like it's really talking into the mic when you're all right here. My name's Tracy Campbell House. I am a proud alumni of Egg Harbor Township, as well as...
Excuse me, Ms. House, if you don't mind, Ms. House, excuse me. The microphone is so people like on live streaming can hear, not necessarily for us, that's okay?
Okay. Just feels really weird.
It does.
Thank you. This feels much better. All right, I'm sorry. Hi, everyone, my name's Tracy Campbell House. I am a proud alumni of Egg Harbor Township, as well as founder and co-owner of Garden State Academy.
Hello, everybody. My name is Linda Pecchia, and I'm co-owner at Garden State Academy.
All right, this evening, can you hear me? Good? All right, this evening, we are going to explain Garden State Academy, who we are and what we represent. We have been in business since 2013, and we are proud to call ourselves a real school for preschool. We worked really hard and diligently to create a professional team over the last eight years. That team includes master-level teachers, certified teachers in preschool to third grade, an intervention team, full-time speech therapists, master special education teachers, developmental intervention therapists, contracting occupation therapists, full-time social worker, security coordinators. We have two retired law enforcement officers on our team. Professional development team, a creative curriculum specialist, mentor teaching program, a director of finance, human resource department, professional cleaning and facility management, high-tech security systems, and a nurse.
Garden State Academy has been the private provider for the preschool expansion grant in Galloway Township for the past three years. I can guarantee what we offer goes above and beyond the expects, the requirements set forth by the state. As you can see, we have a full-day program, at least six hours in length, and we offer before and after care as well for families that need it. Each class has a maximum of 15 students with a P3 certified teacher and a paraprofessional, which, who has 60 credits or more. Garden State Academy utilizes the creative curriculum, and each, there's a bathroom and sink for each classroom. Our Class A facility has newly renovated classrooms, which meet or exceed the requirements of square feet. Our professional development team provides a multitude of trainings throughout the year to help each staff member reach their individual, individual goals. In addition to our ongoing PD, Tracy and I have been master teachers through Stockton University to support teachers and districts in our area who participate in the preschool expansion grant. We offer health benefits, along with additional benefit packages for our employees, and we have a management team with strong leadership skills that help support each of our programs.
In addition to the requirements that are necessary for the preschool expansion grant, we have built so many other things along the way. We call that the GSA Way. We're proud of our first-class facilities. Our facility in Egg Harbor Township right now is a Class A facility. We're proud of our master teachers. We also, in addition to, we have a master Montessori teacher, a Montessori teacher training program, outdoor classrooms, a health and wellness program, yoga and mindfulness, creative curriculum, Spanish curriculum. We have school pictures every fall and spring. We differentiate our instruction to meet the individual needs of all of the students that are in our program. Music Together is woven throughout our programs. You'll hear it in all of the classrooms. Our art program encompasses process art, so it's about the process, not the product. We are proud to offer gardening and composting, a STEAM program in which science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics are at the forefront, extracurricular activities, leadership training to support the GSA vision of raising the bar in early childhood education, field trips, special events. We also have an early childhood advisory council that was established in November of 2020, and parent-teacher conferences every fall and spring.
As you know, this past February, Garden State Academy proudly partnered with Egg Harbor Township to help bring the preschool expansion grant to the district. This partnership has allowed the district to reach more students, and we look forward to helping EHT grow their program.
This is our Galloway location, and we're showing you this because for the last three years, we have established the preschool expansion grant with Galloway Township. So you'll see, we have Toon Galloway, Moss Mill Road, New York Avenue. And additionally, we have, these are some samples of our grant classrooms. You'll see they're set up according to creative curriculum and ECHRS. These are some of the requirements with the preschool expansion grant. We take pride in keeping our classrooms clean and really a first-class experience for the students that we service.
And here you can see a picture of our Egg Harbor Township location. We settled right in.
We've established many, bless you. We've established many relationships within the community. We've had so many wonderful students and families at our Egg Harbor Township location. Both mascots, the Eagle and Albert, our GSA mascot, have made their way around. We've, we've had so many great hands-on learning experiences, gross motor activities. Our students really have benefited from the differentiated instruction that we offer, as you can see in some of these pictures.
And we really encourage them to be lifelong learners and think outside of the box, and our teachers create authentic lessons for them. So here are some pictures of our outdoor space at some of our locations. So at Garden State Academy, we value the outdoors and, and all it has to offer. Teachers are encouraged to utilize our outdoor space as much as possible to provide students with ample opportunities for exploration, open-ended play, and authentic learning opportunities. Our outdoor classroom consists of art, gross motor, science, literacy, gardening, anything, anything you wanna do outside, we do. anything you want to do outside, we do. And some pictures of our garden. In alignment with our health and wellness program, children get to become active participants in the entire process of gardening from seeds to table. They work cooperatively to nurture, harvest, and make special snacks with the fruits and vegetables they get from the garden. All of this is what you can expect at our EHT location, to include a mud kitchen, composting, and our outdoor art area.
As you see, that is the actual outside of our Egg Harbor Township location. This is the mud kitchen that we will have in the future. The children love that.
Lots of mess and fun.
Linda and I have also had ample opportunities to professionally present in the community. In the last eight years, I've also taught at Stockton University, as well as we've both presented at the National Council of Teachers in Mathematics, Early Childhood, and Stockton University Speaker Series, Letting Go and Trusting the Young Child.
In addition, we've also hosted many workshops for teachers and districts that participate in the preschool expansion grant to promote best practice in early childhood education.
We have so many wonderful traditions for our students. We do truly enjoy celebrating them, some of which are the graduations or various ceremonies, St. Jude Bike-A-Thon, Pancake Breakfast, this is all pre-COVID, obviously, when we would have that involvement, Backyard Family Concerts. Our community partnerships are really also very important to us. As you can see here, we have the Galloway Township Police Department, and they were all hands on deck putting together our garden boxes for the students to start their gardening. And Garden State Academy is proud to sponsor students, or, sorry, teams in the community. Garden State Academy is a premier preschool in which students experience cross-curricular education, which includes the arts at the heart of our program. Our parents, teachers, and students all work together to reach one goal, educate the minds of the future. Our school is thought of as a home away from home for children to learn and grow. Our warm atmosphere is welcoming to children as they engage in a friendly space. Research and experience address the need for young children to engage in best practice that differentiate instruction and are developmentally appropriate. This means that as teachers, we need to observe how the child learns best and then create a learning environment that meets his or her needs. We support the child by asking open-ended questions that prompt higher-level thinking.
A network of communication exists between children, parents, and teachers at Garden State Academy. These three units work together to create a spirit of cooperation, collaboration, and co-construction of knowledge, working towards a common purpose to provide each child an opportunity to engage in new experiences within a logical and meaningful context. The teaching staff at Garden State Academy are keen observers, documenters, and partners in the learning process. This allows children to ask their own questions and generate and test their own hypothesis. Children also have the opportunity to explore and generate many possibilities, communicate their ideas to others, and revisit the opportunity to organize our concepts, ideas, and thoughts to construct new meaning.
Early childhood education is the key to the betterment of society, and that quote is by Maria Montessori, who has greatly influenced our mission and our vision at Garden State Academy. We thank you for your time this evening. This is our address and our contact phone number and our website if anyone should have any questions. Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, thank you, Linda, great presentation, excellent program. We appreciate your efforts and for you sharing your childhood education experiences and facilities with us. Any questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Gilbert Floyd.
I just wanted to say that, I think this is my first, took off on my first time meeting you, where the, the energy that you both bring is, you can see it and feel it, and I really was inspired by your presentation and excited for the children of Egg Harbor Township and the parents to have a full-day preschool program that is, to me, looks like, like I said, I haven't been to the building facility yet, but when you said about raising the bar for early childhood education, it, it's clear to me that, that it, that is happening for the preschool students in Egg Harbor Township, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. It's been our passion and our mission.
Your passion, it, it comes through.
Aw, thank you.
Yes. Comment?
Hi, I'm Mr. Price.
Hi.
And I had the opportunity to come out along with a few of the other board members to tour the facility, and I was very impressed with what I did see, and it's a great location, and I'm excited to have something like this in our town and we're able to partner up with you for the good of the students. So I appreciate your hard work, and it was an excellent presentation tonight. Thank you very much for coming.
Anyone else?
Okay, Mr. Castellano, that concludes superintendent's report.
Very good, and I'll just echo the thank you as well to both of you. You know, we're just so excited that this year we implemented full-day kindergarten, we implemented universal preschool. I mean, what a giant leap forward to add basically the full dimension of early childhood education, you know, to Egg Harbor Township School. So we're, we're just thrilled that we were able to get that done this year. So thank you guys again, and at this time, we are going to move into our finance and operations, so don't feel obligated, you guys don't have to hang around for the business if you don't want to.
Thank you so much.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I know, I know it's a whole lot of fun and very interesting, but we're going to go to our finance and operations, and I'm going to ask for our committee report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to report that myself, Mr. Price, Chair, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Salagi, Ms. Aneah, Tom Beck, Director of Food Services, attended our last meeting on June eighth. We discussed food service, we, we discussed the fiscally stable time period from January to June, and the board will not be required to make any contributions to food services this year, and I think that's a very good thing. Staffing, Mr. Beck reported that his overall staff is in good spirits, but they're tired and ready to end the year, and there's reported five or six vacancies. Twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two meals will be free for all students again next year, and Mr. Beck shared his training schedule and items for next year. Transportation, recruitment with, within eleven paras, custodians, and cafeteria workers are interested. We're implementing a new program to try to get some of the existing employees driving some buses, so that's just to bring you up to date on that if you, if you weren't following before. Salary adjustments and longevities for bus aides are on the agenda. Facilities, there was a presentation which will be to the board on the twenty-ninth, but we, we discuss things that are going to be presented. The flagpole process, the, the flagpole here at the middle school was stuck in a raised position. We had some complaints that the flag was flying at night, so it was determined it was stuck and was not lit because we didn't have a way to get the flag down until the bucket truck, bucket truck arrived and, and was registered. It has since been lowered, and all schools are following proper flag protocols. It's also been brought to my attention that all the flags have been replaced around the same time, so that was good, we took care of that. So flags are good at all facilities. Project updates, Mr. Brunetta will be presenting on the twenty-ninth, materials that are going to be difficult to get this summer due to the COVID, nine, due to COVID-19. We talked about the signs around the schools, I know I've talked about this a few times, drug-free, weapon-free school zones. Happy to report that Chief Stein was able to provide maps of the areas and that signs will be, and, and to have, that should have signs. He mapped out the areas that should have signs, and we'll be meeting with public works prior to installing signs for the best placement, which is important, and we will follow up in August to make sure that all the signs are up prior to September. So I'm glad that we made progress on that as well. Business office, student activities, redistribution and spending, we will be using these funds by June thirtieth to reduce the tracking and new requirements of GASBA four. Grant updates, the CARES and the ESSER one, two, and three. The committee discussed the amounts of each of the COVID-related funds and the plans, and we'll, we'll discuss these on six twenty-two, so this is something that we'll, we'll probably follow up on a little while. These plans need to be submitted to the state by six twenty-four, so we're, we're right on that. Once the plan is approved, the nine point five million spending will be discussed with the board and will be submitted to the state by eleven twenty-four, twenty-one. Recreation improvements submitted, the grant to install playing fields at the high school and will be awarded, issued this month. As of six eighteen, no awards have been made, so what I'm saying is we submitted a grant to accomplish those things that I just mentioned, installing playing fields at the high school, and hopefully we'll get that grant, but we're, we're, we're in the, we're in the running, so hopefully Ms. Aneah will have good news on that soon to follow. Workforce development pace, awarded three hundred thousand to implement an apprenticeship program by August first, more information to follow on that as well. Allocations for IDEA and the ESSA allocations were made, and we will request board action on the June twenty-ninth meeting. So we have a lot of things to do on the June twenty-ninth meeting, as you can hear, and remember, if you miss something here, go to your Google Drive, it's all in here, so you can see it at any time at your leisure. That's the miracle and the, the greatness of Google and Google Drive, it's all in there now. Action items on Tuesday, June twenty-second and June twenty-ninth, routine monthly items, annual renewals, bid awards, HVAC, plumbing, doors, special ed service providers, asset disposal, prom twenty-two was discussed. Other items, personnel items will no longer be discussed in this committee. In the past, we've discussed department vacancies, leads, and recruitment efforts, but Dr. Charlton will now be covering these items during Personnel Committee of the whole. Then we talked about basically the norms of the finance and operations, we discussed about confidentiality, items discussed until the full board report at this work session is important that we maintain the confidentiality until tonight, so that's my report. If anybody has any questions, otherwise I'd like to hand it over to Ms. Aneah. Thank you.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Price, that was a great job. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments, board members? Okay, we have to take action on a couple of things tonight. We normally don't, but because of the calendar and when graduation was, we're going to need to take some action. We haven't met for a while, so I'm going to look for a motion on five point two through five point three, four.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion on those items? Okay, seeing none, may we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yeah.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to move to curriculum, and I'll ask for our curriculum committee
Good evening. On June eighth, twenty twenty-one, the curriculum committee met through Google Meet beginning at five PM, and in attendance was Mr. Delabarka, Mrs. Byrd, Ms. Moss, as well as myself. The agenda items we reviewed were the proposal for professional development on the science of reading for all K-5 ELE teachers as well as intervention teachers K-8. We also reviewed upcoming field trips, professional development for staff, the textbook list for district and summer curriculum writing hours. Discussion items included learning acceleration and all summer programs enrollment, curriculum, and staffing. A proposed partnership with Rowan and Peer for equity professional development and audit was also discussed, with hopes to bring them to the table as an approved vendor. Other discussion topics included senior student recognition, summer work in the areas of math and ELA, and improving field trips for sports teams championships at the beginning of each season. Pool for discussion around possible for presentations around the science of reading through letters was also discussed. Moss, do you have anything else to add?
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, we have to take action here as well, six point two through six point four, may I have a motion, please?
Okay.
All right. Very popular tonight, huh? Okay, any discussion on those items? Seeing none, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yeah.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to personnel, and I'm going to ask Dr. Charlton if there's anything for public session.
I do not, other than the wonderful fact that we have actually appointees in the room tonight that Dr. Grugia is going to be interviewing, excuse me, announcing. You already were interviewed.
Yeah, I think, I think you're good. Okay. Any questions or comments for, for public session? So I'm going to ask first for, first we'll do the appointee. Can I have a motion for seven point two through seven point eight, please?
May.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yeah.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, the interview went very well for you. Dr. Grugia.
Throw him a curveball there, but good, good luck. Congratulations to the following, as I announce their presence for the very first time in the Egg Harbor Township School District, math teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School, Ms. Hallie DeBrill. Congratulations and welcome. Gabby Priestley, Spanish teacher at Alder Avenue Middle School. And Jennifer Oliver, science teacher at the high school. Welcome and good luck again.
Very good, welcome, guys. And you're, of course, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but you don't have to. We are going to move on now to policy, and I believe that Mr. Santilli is going to deliver our committee report this week.
All right, so we're going to pinch-hit here. So on Tuesday, June eighth, members of the policy committee met virtually to discuss policy agenda items. Present at the meeting were Pete Castellano, Kristy Byrd, Patrick Ireland, myself, Chandra Aneah, Dr. Terry Charlton, and Amy Haukelko. The following policies and discussions occurred at the meeting on June eighth. New business consisted of mandated Strauss estimated updates with the following policies and Board of Education-approved regulations requiring mandatory revisions as follows. First, we had policy sixteen twenty, administrative employment contracts, regulation sixteen forty-two, earned sick leave, policy sixteen forty-three, family leave, which will require two readings as it's new, policy four one two five, employment of support staff members, policy and regulation fifty-three thirty point five, seizure action plan, again, it's new, requires two readings, policy sixty-four forty, cooperative purchasing, policy and regulation sixty-four seventy point zero one, electronic funds transfer, and claimant certification, again, new, requires two readings, policy and regulation seventy-four twenty-five, lead testing of water in schools, also new and requiring two readings, policy seventy-four fifty, property inventory, policy eighty-five sixty-one, procurement procedures for school nutrition programs, and policy seventy-five ten, use of school facilities. Additional new business consisted of policies that are being recommended for abolishment due to mandatory revisions. Policy sixteen forty-nine for federal, federal families, first coronavirus response act, policy thirty-four thirty-one point one, teaching staff family leave, and policy forty- thirty-one point one teaching staff family leave, and policy forty-four thirty-one point one support staff family leave. Under outstanding business, policy seventy-two thirty-one for crowdfunding was reviewed and discussed by the committee. Due to the extent of the revisions, the policy is being presented for its first reading and approve approval on June twenty-ninth. Additionally, policy seventy-five ten for the use of school facilities was discussed, not just for the mandatory revisions, but also, as mentioned previously, but further information will be provided to the committee as requested at an upcoming committee meeting. The policy for class rank at the recommendation of a board member may be considered for discussion and also at a future policy committee meeting. And that concludes my report. As you can see, it was a busy night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santilli. Any questions or comments? Mr. Ireland first, Ms. Sullivan.
So for policy seventy-five ten use of facilities, school facilities, instead of having a single reading now, since there's significant discussion that's going to happen, should we just hold off on the first reading so that we can discuss further in the policy committee like the notes
Amy, I certainly would defer to you. My suggestion would be to go ahead and approve the policy, only because the mandated changes would allow us to put in effect those changes. And then, of course, it can come back to the committee for further discussion or review. And then, of course, depending upon the flavor of the committee and what's presented to the board, if there's any significant changes, then, of course, then that would be brought forward again.
That would be my legal suggestion. I think the mandated changes are important, but I think it's also important to note that this policy will be brought up at the next policy committee meeting, because there was further information that the policy committee asked the administration to look into regarding use of facilities. So good point, but yes, I think we should still approve it tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
I requested that this policy be reviewed. I don't know whether you discussed the township being moved up to a group one approval for use of facilities or not. I really wish our facilities were easily and readily used by the township without significant costs to them. I know we give them a ten thousand dollar credit right now, which they haven't used to the fullest, but just to have them classified as a group three, I just don't think it's appropriate. I think they should be either a group one or a group two and have no charge for the
Okay, any other comments on policy? Okay, we're not taking action on policy this evening. That will be for next week. We have a couple items on new business for next week. We'll be looking to pass a resolution requesting relief and reexamination of chapter forty-four. Then nine point two for board members, nine point two on your agenda, that reflects our updated norms that we developed at our offsite. So I want to see if everyone is okay with moving forward with those as our new norms in place of what we've had in the past. Is there any need for further revision, or are we okay? Mr. Delabarka?
I don't, I do have a problem with the wording on, I think I understand the whole reasoning behind it, but to say keep your seat just doesn't seem to go over. What does that mean? You know, keep your seat? Does it mean stay in your seat? Maintain your seat? I just thought, I don't know how much we discussed it offsite, but it just seems awkward.
That's the old norms. The new ones say management objectives.
Okay, I apologize, but thank you.
So, yeah, so we would be, you know, kind of leaving the old norms behind, moving to the new ones, you know, based on our work at the offsite, if everyone's good with that. So that's what I'm kind of looking for, to see the nodding heads. And so we'll have that for action next week. We'll adopt nine point two? Yes, everyone good with that? Okay, all right. Two, then, two additional items, a new business. The first will be, I'll take them one at a time. First will be nine point three. You can read, that's ratification of P S A memorandum of agreement twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion on that? Second, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Upstayed.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to add a new item, nine point four, personnel matter, and I'm going to let Ms. Hauk read that motion.
I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the three employee agreements as discussed in executive session.
Ms. Haukelco? May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
To capture the motion, it was to approve three employee agreements based on executive session, based on discussion in the second session.
The motion was to approve three employee agreements as discussed in executive session.
And we have a motion in a second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Not used to being up here without a mask. It's easier to see, it's easier to talk, it's easier to hear, everything. Okay, may I have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
No, due to the reasons as discussed in executive session.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any items under new business. There is no H I B. That will be next week. Moving into communications, we have a new board calendar as always, and I'll turn to Mr. Delabarka to give us the latest and greatest from New Jersey School Boards and Atlantic County School Boards.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. The county officers are meeting on, with New Jersey School Board Association on July seventh to plan our meetings for the fall and for next year. So that's good news will be coming forth after that meeting on July seventh. We are in a discussion right now. Many of you know, New Jersey School Board's Director of Field Services, Jane Costner. Jane is retiring, announced her retirement as of September first. And those of us in Atlantic County who've known her for many years are going to try to have a luncheon on July fourteenth for her, and that is open to all board members in Atlantic County, not just the president's. Open to any board member who is interested. And try to get back to me sometime soon if you're interested in attending, so that we can make detailed plans as to location and timing and so forth. Remind all of our board members that our Atlantic County eighth grade dialogue this year has the video. It's actually in three parts. If you go to the School Board Association website, you can go to see all three videos from Atlantic County. We had many of our students talk and discuss and explain how they survived the pandemic. It's really very interesting to hear from the eighth graders. So if you're interested, go on anytime, and you can see, actually, you can go through the whole state and see all the eight counties, I believe, that participated and see the kids. They really were quite articulate, and it's interesting to see how they dealt with the pandemic and go into school virtually. As you all know, on the board, the school board's workshop is being planned for October twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. It will be virtual again this year, and Ms. Anaya will be making registration for us and take care of us, all of us, and when we get close to that time. I know if you get your school board notices, like all of us do every day, they remind us constantly about the workshop. Also, they have registration for all their virtual programs that's online all the time, and there's quite a few programs that they present that are appropriate for all of us. So if you have the time, you go online, check, pick out a good program, they'll get credit for it towards your different amounts of degrees that you get, and they're quite educational and detailed. And that's all for now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Delabarka. Ms. Gilbert Floyd, you have something?
It's not, I'm about to, it's appropriate for me to ask a question. The policy already went, but I had a question about, something to put about when you report.
Sure.
Okay, so when Mrs. Sullivan, when you asked about having a township committee be in a class one or a class two, I guess my question, and given my ignorance, I'm not sure so far as Acre Harbor Township School District, when we, if we were in the need or the use of township facilities, how does that work? Are we, we just call over and say, hey, we want to use the rec center, or, hey, we need to use the amphitheater, or, hey, we need to use Barker Town Park? What, how, what's the relationship that the township has with the district, the school district when it comes to use of the township facilities?
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I couldn't really do a Q and A, but we'll go ahead, one more comment, and then we'll move on.
That was just my comment. So if they, if I could find that information out, I think that would be, have the information just to make a decision based on where the township is placed, far as whether it's tier class one, two, or three. I just think I just need to know some background information on that whenever that information is available, you know? That's all.
Well, another one thing that we do, Eagle Academy uses their facilities for their phys ed classes, and there's no charge. That's one unfamiliarity.
Mr. President, comment, please? Yes. While we're talking about this, I know I've talked about it a few other times before, but I want to see the facilities, meaning outside, more accessible to all of the public when they come onto our grounds. And I see it quite often, I want to make sure that they're here legally, because from what I understand, they don't, they're not supposed to be here right now. And I want to get clarification on what the policy committee is going to do to rectify that and remedy the problem that will welcome our residents to come onto the grounds after hours, to maybe throw a frisbee around, or, you know, whatever the case may be. And I think that we need to pursue that a little bit further and get more clarity on it, if that is possible.
And we've talked about that quite a bit, and we'll continue to discuss, and I'm going to let Ms. Haukelco just chime in just a little bit.
Just to briefly kind of circle back, so as Mr. Santilli said, the policy committee did task the administration to look up certain data, information, use of outdoor facilities. I think the committee clearly heard the board's concerns, what the board would like to see, so they're gathering more information, so the policy committee can make whatever recommendation they want to make after they make, after they get that information. And then, I'm assuming from there, the next step would be to present to the board at the work session like we're doing now, and then from there, you can move forward and have a board discussion on it. So it is in the works, we are moving forward, and we are listening, the policy committee is listening to the other board members' concerns.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move to public comment, then there'll be board member comment. And we have one more action item following that, which will be to approve the E S S R three American Recovery Plan that we were briefed on earlier. So what we'll do now is we'll go to public comment. Public comment is three minutes. We'll ask folks to give their name and address for the record. As you know, most of you know, we can't discuss personnel or litigation, confidential matters. And it may be that a question will come to us that will be, and we'll have to have someone get back to you with the answer. So I know we're still using our phone system, but we'll start here in the room first, and then we'll go to our phones.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. Debbie Rockelman, one eighty-nine Alder Avenue, E H T. I have a couple of things. The protocol for COVID. I was in this building sobbing one day and got home to find, to get a call from my son, who tested positive and everybody else in his house did. And I had been there over the course of three days quite frequently. I called Kelly Solutions, told them I had scheduled, I had a job scheduled for the next day, said, yeah, I'm sure you don't want me in there, I'm vaccinated and whatever, but I don't know if I can carry it, or, you know. I left a message with the girl, you know, could you have the principal call me, or the nurse call me, or somebody call me to tell me what I need to do or what I don't need to do. I did not get a return phone call from anybody. I called the board administration office and left a lengthy message and did not get a call back from anybody. So if that's how serious we take this, I'm kind of concerned. So I took it upon myself, I just didn't work for the rest of the year, because I take it seriously. I don't know all the ins and outs, I'm vaccinated, but can I still carry it? Whatever. I don't want to come back into a classroom. So two places I called, two places never called me back over a matter that has, like, is extremely important, and it's crippled us for a year and a half. So having said that, the next thing I'd like to say is regarding, I think you were talking about policy, Lou, or, okay, that it might be revisited. Someone brought it up, the valedictorian, that, all that stuff, class ranking. Well, it might be revisited. It should be revisited, in my opinion, because Dr. Grugio did mention, we have a fabulous graduation ceremony, bar, you know, second to probably none in the state of New Jersey. And I think we're penalizing even, I was here when Samantha Elko did the presentation of how close all the, still, why take that away from the kids? Your girls were, you know? Why take that away? Because of, somebody else is doing it, Mainland High School's doing it, or so. Let's do what works for us, not everybody else, because not what everybody else is doing is always right. That's just my humble opinion on that. I think it should be revisited. I think it should be discussed, and I would like to see it changed back, because you have a beautiful ceremony. What's more wonderful than having the top of your class stand there and give a fabulous speech to the, you know? So I think that we spend a lot of time looking at younger grades, what we can do for them, how can we can lift them up, what we can, what we can teach them and so forth and so on. Yeah, well, that's all, that's all well and good, but as we keep moving up, you know, we're taking away from our older students. That's, so that is all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I apologize that no one got back to you. I have no idea when you called, who you called. Someone should be getting back to you, and someone will get back to you in regard to the health concerns. You know, over on to this, this class rank, this seems to come up. I'm, it's, I don't believe it's, you know, a real issue. We're not taking anything away from anyone. We're going to increase the stature and the standing of our graduation, we're going to make it even better. We're following best practices, and that will not go into effect until, not this coming school year, but the following, and we're going to have, no, 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 we're, I'm answering now. And so what we're going to do is our administration will be rolling out regulations to implement that policy on how we're going to, following best practices. And I'm going to ask if Dr. Grugio has a little bit more to add. I'm sorry, we're not, you know, we're just not going to do a yelling back and forth. You can come back up if you'd like, and I'd be happy, we can do another three minutes, but we're not, no, you can't, we're not going to go back and forth.
That's fine.
Mr. Castellano, you pretty much covered it. Along with that policy, needs to be regulations that need to spell out what the that need to spell out what the future's going to look for, look like. So we are working on that, and that, they will be in effect soon.
Can you, Mr. Castellano, could you explain to me exactly what best practices means?
So best would be the best practices. As opposed to not as good.
Where, where do the standard, where does the standard for a best practice come from?
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to be having our administration roll out regulations to implement, and we will keep you informed on it.
Based on best practices?
Yes.
But you didn't answer my question. As far as what is, what is best practices?
Equity. So best, rather than only have a few, we're, we want to recognize more students. We want to have honors, high honors and highest honors, or cum laude, magna cum laude, summa cum laude, so that we recognize and celebrate the accomplishment of more students. More students, well, that doesn't necessarily preclude that, but we want to recognize and celebrate more students. So we want to make our graduation even better. We want to celebrate our class even better. And that's best practice.
Absolutely.
That's best practice.
Thank you.
Anyone else here before we go to the phones?
Hi, everyone. Donna Freund, 303 Dorchester Drive, EHT. On behalf of the EHT PSA, I just want to say thank you to the board for approving our agreement. Okay? Thanks.
You're very welcome. Okay, anyone else here live? Before we go to the phones? Okay, Ms. Anaya, let's roll that phone footage. Roll that beautiful bean footage. Let's go to the phones. Okay. I guess folks are tired of calling in on those phone lines. Maybe we're just boring tonight, I don't know. So do we have any more, any comments from board members?
Is this the time to comment from board members? Oh.
Yes, it is.
Wow. We're moving right along here. Well, I would just like to comment that we all attended the high school graduation last week, and it was a great graduation. And I, I really enjoyed it. I think it was well put together. The weather was superb. I can't think of a better day to have a graduation. So I appreciate the hard work of the staff, the administration, and the teachers, and the security, facilities, everybody. I mean, it was just an incredible event. And I think it was a very special event because we didn't have one like it last year. So I just, I couldn't let that go unsaid. And I just wanted to comment that, comment that tonight. And again, I really appreciate it, and I'm sure others will, will comment on it as well. It was a great day. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Any other board members? Mrs. Solagi?
I'll now go back to the class rank. I don't think it was brought up because it was election time. It was brought up because of graduation just happening and students coming back in September and making it a goal. It was taken away with the students' no input. We saw the input, they came at the audience, and they weren't exactly in favor of it happening. So election does not have anything to do with it. But speaking of election, Ms. Elko, we are five years now where we have moved our election to November. It's become very political, and the taxpayers have no say in the budget, which was taken away from them. What, what would the procedure be to move the election back to April since our five years have moved forward?
I can look that up for you and have it prepared for the next meeting at my attorney's report and give you that information. There is a specific procedure, and I don't want to misquote, say inaccurate information because it is specific, and there's timelines and deadlines.
Okay. Well, I just feel because it's five years are up, and we should explore it because of those two reasons that I just stated.
Ms. Gilbert Floyd?
I just want to make sure I'm, make sure I'm clear on what you just, are you asking about the Board of Education election? The board members having a separate election? In, in April? Versus having it the same time as November, the other, where everything else is? So what difference, what do you think will make a difference? And what?
We changed the election from April to November knowing that it would probably become political. It has become political. And it also takes the public's say out of the budget. So now that the five years are up, I would like to explore what the procedure is to move the election back to April, get the politics out of it, and also give the taxpayers a say in the budget and their taxes.
Okay, I just, I just think that, this is just my opinion. I just think that, you know, having an election in November, it seems like you would get, it seems like more people come out when there's that election. And you get more, people tend to come out more, remember, oh, yeah, ho, have to vote, you know? So I don't, I don't necessarily know if having it in April would, maybe it would be less people coming out for it, just my opinion. And I think that anytime you, not, well, I just want to say it. Our township, any other township, municipality, politics, politics is not supposed to be a part of it at all. But I think that's something that, I don't think the time in which you have it is going to make a difference with politics being involved, even though it shouldn't be. I think people want to have their political views, and they, sometimes they still over. That's just my opinion.
That's all.
Other board members? So, I mean, it was said that we took something away from students with class rank. Nothing was taken away. We're, we're giving more. We're going to be recognizing more students of 2,500 or so kids in the high school. Exactly one came out speaking against it. The overwhelming response has been favorable. And, you know, I understand the point about a budget. But again, when you have a much larger turnout at a fall election, we have what we, is known as a representative democracy. We're elected, and people can elect us or not elect us, and, and we're held responsible. So that's how that's done at every other level of government. They hold their representatives responsible. Sure.
We had one student come out because the students didn't know anything about it.
I think they all knew about it.
There was somebody that came out. In fact, it was a spouse of a board member that came out and was going to speak on behalf of taking it away. But after they heard the conversations back and forth, they agreed that it shouldn't be taking place. So the fact that many students didn't come out, they didn't know about it. But they know about it now, and they don't agree with it. And that's why I'm asking for the policy committee to do something about it.
I'm not aware of any students that...
Well, Mr. Castellano, your daughter was valedictorian in her class, and I'm sure it made her very proud. And I'm sure she worked very hard towards that. And that is something that the valedictorian at the graduation last week said. He made that a goal when he was in 6th grade. And he accomplished that goal. But many kids feel that way also. And just because other districts have taken it away, we don't need to follow them. We're a large district. Do what Acre Township does. Let's not do what other districts do.
I think we need to follow best practice. And I really don't appreciate having my daughter brought up. I can tell you, my, my daughter's position was that she would much rather see more students recognized through the honors, high honors, and highest honors system. She would have been very, very happy to see that happen. She was in favor. She knew all about our change in class rank and was in favor of it, of our class rank change.
I know, Mr., I know, Mr., hand is up, and I'm not going to, your hand is up. I just want to say, I definitely think that we should leave each other's childrens out, children's spouses out of it. That's kind of like a don't touch kind of subject.
If, do we have any further board member comment? And then we're going to go to 14.1. Mr. Ireland?
Mr. Castellano, maybe for the election question, maybe we could bring that up in the legislative meeting that we have with the New Jersey School Boards Association. And then we could get a more concrete answer with the statutory requirements that way, along with our board attorney. But maybe we can just ask that question and get a better answer, or get a answer for our next meeting, the next time we have a legislative meeting. I think that would be it. But most likely, it's because of cost. Because you have to bring people in, the poll workers and everything. But it would be a good question to ask for our legislative committee.
Excellent. Okay. We have, you know, public comment. We've, we've ended public comment. Do we have anything from, from administration? So we're now going to look for a motion on 14.1.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion on 14.1? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda? Yes. Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay. We are finished with our business for our work meeting. We will see you all next Tuesday night for our June business meeting, where we'll continue the business of getting ready for summer and next school year. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second. We are adjourned.